...business runs efficiently and that all statutory and administrative rules are followed. In accordance with the Freedom of Information Act and Governor Lamont's executive orders, this meeting is being recorded and will be made available on the City of Milford's website. If a member of the board would like to speak, please utilize the raise your hand feature via Zoom. And please do not speak over one another. And when you are not speaking, please keep your phones and computers on mute. After being recognized to speak, please state your name prior to making a statement. With that, will everyone please stand up wherever you are? And please join me as we salute our flag. And also I'll ask for a moment of silence for those 2,403 servicemen and women who lost their lives 79 years ago on December 7th, 1941, the attack on Pearl Harbor. As President Franklin D. Roosevelt called it "a date which will live in infamy." I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. Madam Secretary, will you please take the roll?
Alderman Beatty?
Present.
Alderman Gaynor?
Here.
Alderman Genitazio?
Yeah.
Alderman Golden?
Here.
Alderman Hardeman?
Madam Secretary, Alderman Hardeman would like to be excused.
Thank you. Alderman Harlan?
Here.
Alderman Marlowe?
Here.
Alderman Parente?
Here.
Alderman Frank Smith? Alderman Frank Smith?
Frank, you're muted.
He's in Hartford.
Oh, he is in Hartford, okay.
What are you kidding? What are you kidding?
No, he's not in Hartford.
Yeah.
Oh, really?
I'm here, I wish I was there.
I see, I see he's there, but he's not responding. Alderman Winthrop Smith?
Here.
Alderman Sutton?
Here.
Alderman Tranquilly?
Here.
Alderman Vitro?
Here.
Alderman Vitale?
Here.
Alderman Willis?
Here.
Well, there he is. Alderman Frank Smith?
Here. Sorry, sorry about that.
That's okay. 14 present.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. We do have the forum. The next portion of the meeting is devoted to public comment. Please use the raise your hand feature via Zoom or state your name if you're using the conference line. This is limited to the legislative function of the Board of Aldermen. The time limit granted to each speaker shall be three minutes. Residents, taxpayers, and electors may address the board at this time or provide comment through email. The board encourages speakers not to express derogatory, insensitive, or offensive statements or to engage in personal attacks against individuals. I'd like to allow everyone an opportunity to speak and ask that everyone please limit their comments to three minutes. Alderman Sutton, Agenda Item Number Three, consideration of minutes for the regular meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the minutes of the regular meeting of the Board of Aldermen held on November 9, 2020.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Madam Secretary, roll call vote, please.
Alderman Beatty?
Approved, yes.
Alderman Gaynor?
Yes.
Alderman Genitazio?
Yes.
Alderman Golden?
Yes.
Alderman Harla?
Yes.
Alderman Marlowe?
Yes.
Alderman Parente?
Yes.
Alderman Frank Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Winthrop Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Sutton?
Yes.
Alderman Tranquilly?
Yes.
Alderman Vitro?
Yes.
Alderman Vitale?
Yes.
Alderman Willis?
Yes.
All in favor.
Motion passes unanimously. Agenda Item Number Four, there are no special meeting minutes to consider. Move on to Agenda Item Number Five, Chairman's Report. I'd like to just wish everyone, at this point, a very Merry Christmas, a happy Hanukkah, and a happy Kwanzaa. And also I hope this next coming year, which we will be meeting, will be a much happier year and a much more progressive year, productive year as well. That's all I have. Agenda Item Number Six, Mayor's Report and Recommendations. Is there a report from the mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Hope everyone enjoyed their Thanksgiving holiday. I suspect it was a smaller Thanksgiving table than any of us are used to, but I hope it was a healthy one. Hope everybody is enjoying the spirit of the season as we enter this festive time of year. I know that even though we're not doing some of the things that we normally do because of the pandemic, people are being creative and finding new ways to, again, celebrate happiness and make sure that everybody enjoys this time. I do respectfully request your consideration and action on those items listed in the Agenda, Item 8A through Item 8G. The only other bit of good news for the December meeting is that we did have another refunding at the November meeting. I reported back that we had saved approximately $1.4 million for an initial refunding. We had a second refunding of low-interest clean water program loans where we saved another more than $1.4 million for a total of over $2.8 million. We came to you back in September asking for authorization to refinance some loans and some notes from over a decade ago. We thought the best-case scenario was about a million dollars, maybe a little over a million dollars, and we came in with almost $3 million worth of savings for the city. That's terrific news, so great job to Peter Aire DC and his finance team. Other than that, if you have questions throughout the course of the meeting, feel free to ask away.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We'll open up to Agenda Item Number Seven, there is no new unfinished business. And the next item on the agenda, Item Number Eight, moving on to new business, Alderman Sutton, Agenda Item Number 8A.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that the board approves the appointment of Stephen De Brow, 15 Rose Street, as a member of the Pension and Retirement Commission to fill the present vacancy, term expiring December 31st, 2020.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Madam Secretary, roll call vote, please.
Alderman Beatty?
Yes.
Alderman Gaynor?
Yes.
Alderman Genitazio?
Yes.
Alderman Golden?
Yes.
Alderman Harla?
Yes.
Alderman Marlowe?
Yes.
Alderman Parente?
Yes.
Alderman Frank Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Winthrop Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Sutton?
Yes.
Alderman Tranquilly?
Yes.
Alderman Vitro?
Yes.
Alderman Vitale?
Yes.
Alderman Willis?
Yes.
All in favor.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Madam Secretary. Is Stephen De Brow available to be sworn in by our city clerk? He is not, so he will have to make arrangements to visit the city clerk's office to get sworn in on his own. Next item on the agenda is 8B.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that the board approves the city's request to accept the 2020 Small Town Economic Assistance Program STEAP award in the amount of $128,205 from the State of Connecticut for enhancements to the Veterans Memorial Auditorium and to authorize the mayor, public works director, and finance director to take all steps necessary, including signing all documents, to effectuate said grant.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman? Alderman Marlowe.
Alderman Genitazio, you have your hand up. Alderman Harla.
Mr. Chairman, through you to the mayor. Mr. Mayor, good evening. Just to fill me in, this is a little new to me. I looked up what a steep grant really was, so I understand that a little better. I had just a question, though, as far as I know the grant, and we have a matching amount of $125,000 that we put in. Is that my understanding of this, how this grant works?
So, Mr. Chairman, through you to Alderman Marlowe, great to have you fully on board. I think this is the first full meeting. I know that you came on board last meeting, so welcome again.
Thank you.
Probably, again, the grant is an acronym for Small Town Economic Assistance Program. Milford is a small city. In the grand scheme of Connecticut municipalities, we're one of the larger. Why do we qualify for the Small Town State Grant? It's because probably six years ago, seven years ago, we opted out of the Urban Act Grant, which our size municipality would normally qualify for. And the reason we opted out and opted into the steep program is because, you know, we look back 20 years and we had never received one of those, you know, $1, $2, $3 million awards under the Urban Act. So, since we've been under the steep program, you can either be in one or the other, not both, we've received several awards. We received an award with the Borough of Woodmont to rehab the Borough Hall, about $500,000 grant. We received another award for another $500,000 for the rehab of the Beaver Brook Trail, the boardwalk that burnt down several years ago. So, we have successfully realized a couple of different awards. This award, believe it or not, is for the maximum amount that the state is offering for 2020. Normally, it's up to $500,000, and this year it's up to $128,000 and change. So, they reduced it this year because of some of the financial difficulties in the state. We had to put together a application for this grant. We looked at some of the capital projects that we had in the docket, and we tried to match up those projects with something reasonable for this grant, and that was the rehab of the auditorium at Parsons to make it more acoustically friendly with new seats as well as more comfort. And we also have to do some remediation of the flooring. So, the project is going to be a little over, well, a little over $200,000 in total, and we plan to utilize this steep money with some money that was bonded last year from the Board of Aldermen to kind of finish that project and make the whole auditorium more usable.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think it's a great project. It really does need some updates there for sure, especially the sound system. So, it'll be great.
Well, I think one of the things is if we have chairs that are a little bit more acoustically friendly, I think it'll enhance the entire auditorium. Right now, we have hard plastic chairs where the noise reverberates, and it doesn't suck in the noise as much or muffle the noise. I'm not an acoustical engineer, but I do know that it's supposed to make a significant difference.
Thank you.
Is there any more discussion on the motion?
Alderman Genitazio.
Alderman Genitazio.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Happy holidays to everyone on the board. Through you to Mayor Blake. Mayor Blake, you mentioned in the past that we've also have received this grant in, you know, a higher dollar amount. You mentioned the $500,000, which I'm accustomed to. I do recall that. My question is, based on the scope of work that you want to use this steep grant towards, it sounds to me like it's going to be well over $200,000, especially if there's abatement issues there, because those are unknown issues. You don't really know until you start getting into the material to see how much is, you know, really there. So, this money that was allocated by the Board of Aldermen through, you mentioned, bonding, where exactly is it coming from and what is the cap on this project? How much are we willing to spend in order to get this completed?
Mr. Chairman, through you to Alderman Genitazio, we have estimates anywhere between $5 to $7 a square foot for the flooring removal, and we don't know exactly how much it's going to be, but that, those are the estimates that we have so far because we haven't put it out to bid until we have this part of the project authorized. My guess is it comes in somewhere between $200,000 and $300,000. That's the paperwork that we sent to the state for our grant application, and, you know, that's where we anticipate the project cost to be.
And just to follow up, Mayor Blake, where exactly is the money going to be coming from? Do you, or what account, or out of what department?
So, this is something that we can discuss, but the last bonding cycle, you folks did authorize monies to enhance the auditorium at the Parsons complex with this vision. The lucky thing is, because we had the capital improvement plan teed up, we were able to defray the total cost by latching on to the steep grant, awarded the steep grant, so that hopefully cuts the project's cost in half or even less than half. But $128,205 would come from the steep state grant, and then the rest would come through a local source.
So, Mayor Blake, would you be able to report back to us under informational purposes moving forward, once you receive the bid for the abatement portion of this project?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome. Is there any more discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Madam Secretary, roll call vote, please.
Alderman Beatty? Alderman Gaynor?
Yes.
Alderman Genitazio?
Yes.
Alderman Golden?
Yes.
Alderman Harla?
Yes.
Alderman Marlowe?
Yes.
Alderman Parente?
Yes.
Alderman Frank Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Winthrop Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Sutton?
Yes.
Alderman Tranquilly?
Yes.
Alderman Vitro?
Yes.
Alderman Vitale?
Yes.
Alderman Willis?
Yes.
All in favor.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Madam Secretary. And next item on the agenda is 8C, Alderman Sutton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that the board approves the proposed attached resolution regarding cash advance for the State of Connecticut's Small Town Economic Assistance Program Award.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Madam Secretary, roll call vote, please.
Alderman Beatty?
Approved, yes.
Alderman Gaynor?
Yes.
Alderman Genitazio?
Yes.
Alderman Golden?
Yes.
Alderman Harla?
Yes.
Alderman Marlowe?
Yes.
Alderman Parente?
Yes.
Alderman Frank Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Winthrop Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Sutton?
Yes.
Alderman Tranquilly?
Yes.
Alderman Vitro?
Yes.
Alderman Vitale?
Yes.
Alderman Willis?
Yes.
All in favor.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Motion passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda is 8D, Alderman Sutton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that the board approves the proposed memorandum of agreement for the Department of Public Health Public Health Preparedness Program by and between Chesapeake Health District and Milford Health Department, 2020 through 2024, and to authorize the mayor and health director to take all steps necessary to effectuate said agreement.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Good evening. Mr. Chairman, through you, I guess to mayor or the public health director, just in reading through this, I see that there's a lot more, it seems like, responsibilities that have to be taken on with this agreement. And I just was wondering, do you see that we'll have to, that the staff we have right now is adequate to do this? Do you see any, anything that would have to be adjusted?
Mr. Chairman, through you to Alderman Marlowe. I'll give you the broad strokes, and then Deepa Joseph, our Director of Health, can fill in some of the details. But the city has administered several different grants. In this case, I think we are the actual, the sub-grantee in Chesapeake, which is an amalgamation of different towns like Cheshire, Prescott, maybe? It's several different towns, that's what the name is. That health district is the actual recipient of the grant and the administrator of the grant, but we do the actual preparedness component, and we have several of these things in place right now. But I'll let Deepa Joseph, our Director of Health, fill you in on some of the details of this grant that we administer.
Good evening, everyone. So, this grant, actually, we have had a version of this grant in place for the past 16 years, but it's just changed in terms of who the funding goes through. So, it used to be a contract that used to come directly from the Connecticut Department of Public Health to the Milford Health Department. In the past, starting beginning with last year, the state decided to disseminate these funds through one regional health district per region, which is the Chesapeake Health District, which covers Cheshire, Prospect, and Wiltwick. So, this funding comes through Chesapeake to us, we're a subcontractor to them, but the activities involved are activities that are comparable to what has been required in the past. The difference being this year, they have changed some of the deliverables in light of the current COVID-19 pandemic to allow us, instead of looking at preparedness from a planning standpoint, as we have for the past 16 years or so, that we are currently in a public health emergency real event response. So, we'll be able to utilize many of our COVID-19 activities to fulfill the deliverables in this contract.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome. Is there any more discussion on the motion? Alderman Genitazio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to Deepa. Deepa, good evening. Thank you for the background on this. My question is, how do we, how do, how do we benefit from this? Do we realize dollars? Do we get a portion of the grant in dollars? Or how does the taxpayer or the City of Milford benefit from this? And why are we in this agreement with towns that are further away, like Cheshire and the other town that you mentioned? I'm just curious.
Thank you for the question. So, again, this is a contract that's been in place for many years, except that the Chesapeake Health District is essentially passing through funds from this Department of Public Health to all of the towns in Region 2, which is what Milford is a part of. So, we are not the only subcontractor to Chesapeake Health District. It's all of the local health departments and districts in Department of Emergency Management Region 2 that receive this, and it is funding that we receive in the amount of $27,720. In terms of how we benefit, this is the funding that has allowed us, over the past 16 years, to plan and prepare for public health emergencies, of which we are in one right now, and we have benefited from being able to be recipients of this funding because we have had mass vaccination plans in place that we are getting ready to activate in just a couple of weeks. So, this contract and this funding allows us to continue with our preparing and response. It primarily supports our part-time public health emergency preparedness coordinator, which has also been in place for the past several years, and that is the person responsible for writing all of our plans and taking the lead in making sure that, as we've responded to COVID, as we've responded to H1N1 in the past, Ebola, et cetera, that we're able to implement our plans and continue to operationalize them. So, that is the benefit of receiving this funding.
Just to follow up, Mr. Chairman, through you. Deepa, can you just answer one last question? Has that dollar amount been consistent throughout the years, or has it increased due to COVID?
Unfortunately, the dollar amount has decreased over the years. So, we received more than twice as much when this contract started out back in, actually, 2004, and over the years it has decreased because many, much of our planning has been completed, and the focus has really been on drills and exercises over the past few years, with this year being different and that we're in an actual public health emergency.
Okay. Thank you, Deepa. I appreciate the explanation. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome. Any more discussion on the motion? Alderman Frank Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just following up on Alderman Genitazio's question, on this, Deepa, the, most of these things in the past have been preparedness, as in the title of this action, is a preparedness exercises that are conducted in anticipation of different types of public health situations. We are in the throes of the biggest pandemic in any of our lifetime, and a lot of these things are going to necessarily be deployed in the coming year. Am I correct in, from what I've read here, this is largely working on preparedness issues, exercise, and planning as opposed to actual implementation? In other words, these funds would not necessarily be directed toward distribution of vaccinations, of logistical expenses, and bringing, in setting up vaccination sites and that, practical-type applications. Am I correct, Deepa, in saying this is solely for preparation and planning purposes from which other funds or maybe even, you know, federal or state funding will be available?
Historically, that has been correct. This year, though, they have made allowances to utilize this funding for planning, preparing, as well as actually responding to this current COVID-19 pandemic. So, again, a good portion of this budget is allocated towards our Public Health Emergency Preparedness Coordinator, and her time spent on our plans and preparing for our upcoming vaccination clinics are included in this grant, as well as we have a Medical Reserve Corps volunteer group. The volunteer coordinator's wages are also included that, in that, and we, that person will also be working as part of our upcoming that in that. And we, that person will also be working as part of our upcoming vaccination clinics as well. So we are able to use it for planning, preparedness, and response this year.
Thank you.
Is there any more discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, Madam Secretary, please.
Alderman Beatty? Alderman Beatty?
Approve, yes.
Alderman Gaynor?
Yes.
Alderman Ginatasio?
Yes.
Alderman Golden?
Yes.
Alderman Harla?
Yes.
Alderman Marlowe?
Yes.
Alderman Parente?
Yes.
Alderman Frank Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Winthrop Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Sutton?
Yes.
Alderman Tranquilly?
Yes.
Alderman Vitro?
Yes.
Alderman Vitale?
Yes.
Alderman Willis?
Yes.
All in favor?
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Motion passes unanimously. Next item on agenda is 8E, Alderman Sutton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that the board approves the proposed affiliation agreement between Milford Health Department and Fairfield University for clinical practicum and authorize the mayor and health director to take all steps necessary to effectuate said agreement.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Alderman Ginatasio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to Deepa. Deepa, if you can just give us an idea of how many students participate in this at one time at your department?
This actually Fairfield University started their public health program in the past year. So this is a new agreement for an internship with Fairfield University in particular. We will only, we only plan to have one intern through Fairfield University, hopefully for the spring semester. That is largely limited to one due to COVID restrictions, some space concerns, and just our ability to be able to precept for only one intern from the university at this time due to our COVID activities.
Just to follow up, Mr. Chairman, through you, Deepa, what will the specific functions be of the the intern?
So the intern will be working partially remotely, partially on site. We anticipate utilizing this intern to assist with some of the clerical and administrative duties specifically associated with our COVID-19 mass vaccination campaign. We simply just don't have the bodies and our staff to be able to turn around some of the the administrative work that needs to be turned around and and gotten to the federal government through the electronic system. So we'll be able to utilize the intern for that purpose, as well as for contact tracing purposes.
Thank you, Deepa. I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome. Any more discussion on the motion? Alderman Marlowe?
Through you, Mr. Chair, to to Deepa. One of the questions was already answered as far as what the responsibilities of the intern would be. Do you see this, is this a program that you see is going to continue from year to year?
Yes, we we typically post interns. In the past, it's been interns from Southern's Public Health Program as well as Yale's Public Health Program. So we definitely see value from a public health workforce development perspective and have utilized interns in the past and intend to do so moving forward to assist with our routine activities as well, specifically in the area of public health accreditation, once we can get past this pandemic.
Thank you, Deepa. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, through you to Alderman Ginatasio and Marlowe. We have had similar agreements with Sacred Heart and Fairfield for clinicians in training at those schools. We've utilized them on our human services side for youth and family services to assist, you know, in clinical aspects, you know, both at our schools and in our community. So it's a similar agreement that we have for other types of internship programs at Fairfield, Southern, Sacred Heart, and Quinnipiac.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is there any more discussion on the motion? Alderman Vitale?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you to to Deepa. Hi, Deepa. Sometimes during these, obviously, these challenging times, sometimes clinical practicums as of something like this can be also a disadvantage and an advantage. So I would only hope that at this particular point in time, the agreement is that because we're taking it on, it's going to be a tremendous advantage to us and to you in the in the health department. But the fact remains, who's going to be responsible? Is there going to be a supervision or supervisor assigned to this individual? Or do you just take on this responsibility? Or do the health department just take this responsibility yourselves and to supervise and to train and to to do whatever it takes for that job to be done correctly?
So the supervision of the intern, intern happens through, would happen through the health department as well as through their academic advisor. So from our department, it would be our community health coordinator who works part-time, who is typically responsible for oversight of interns and making sure that they are completing their tasks appropriately. In this case, as much of the work will be COVID-19 focused, there will be dual oversight from our nursing director and our community health coordinator, depending on the duties. And then they will also have oversight from their academic advisor at Fairfield U.
Just as a follow-up, I'm sure all the assigned tasks would be in the realm of capabilities of that individual. But the fact remains that they would go into it knowing what the tasks would be and therefore would be able, would be capable of accomplishing those tasks. Is that true? All right?
Absolutely. So typically, in selecting our interns from any of the public health programs that we work with, they do go through an interview process, as would happen with any paid staff at the health department. So they are required to submit their resume, a cover letter. We review that, interview candidates, and then select a candidate from from the pool. And making sure that we do provide a list of of responsibilities that gets reviewed with their academic advisor, as well as with us through the interview process to make sure it's a good fit.
Thank you. So that process is on you, really, to or a group of you or somebody else. So it is time consuming on our part, meaning the health department's part to interview and and to pick and choose that individual. So there is, there's, there's a lot of, it's labor intensive on your part and also to pick out that right person. I'm sure the job will get done, but it's always, there's always a lot of behind the scenes as you unlayer all of the work that needs to be done to to cooperate in such a program like this with Fairfield. Okay, thank you very much.
Any more discussion on the motion?
Yes.
Alderman Beatty?
Yes, I just would like to clarify what my understanding of it is that the the relationship is based, it's an educational experience for the students. So they're not just, you know, agencies don't use clinical placements just to cover employment time or when people are on leave. The student comes with faculty supervision, with objectives that have to be met. And I do want, I'm adding this on because Milford Health Department is a very sought-out clinical placement among educational institutions. So it's not a surprise that Fairfield would just, which just started this program, is seeking out Milford Department Health to join Southern and Sacred Heart and other universities that do that. So there is reciprocity. And there isn't, I suppose, in anything, there's some responsibility of the agency to make sure that things are going well. But there is more, Deepa, the director just mentioned, there's dual supervision. There really is triple supervision. And if the experience doesn't meet the educational experiences, suppose they found out that the student was in over her head, his or her head, and didn't understand the the data, that that wouldn't be considered a placement that would meet the objectives, and they wouldn't enter into the contract next time. So this is really a very good thing with lots of reciprocity and benefit to both sides. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Beatty. Any more discussion on the motion? Hearing none. A roll call vote, please, Madam Secretary.
Alderman Beatty?
Approve, yes.
Alderman Gaynor?
Yes.
Alderman Ginatasio?
Yes.
Alderman Golden?
Yes.
Alderman Harla?
Yes.
Alderman Marlowe?
Yes.
Alderman Parente?
Yes.
Alderman Frank Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Winthrop Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Sutton?
Yes.
Alderman Tranquilly?
Yes.
Alderman Vitro?
Yes.
Alderman Vitale?
Yes.
Alderman Willis?
Yes.
All in favor?
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Motion, motion was approved unanimously. Next item on the agenda is 8F, Alderman Sutton, Agenda Item 8F.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the board approves the requested allocation transfer number three, revaluation expenses.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Alderman Ginatasio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to Mayor Blake. Mayor Blake, I understand that we haven't filled the tax assessor's position, which heads up that department. With this before us tonight, this allocation of $175,000 to be allocated and and expensed out of our, I believe it's the general fund that it's coming from, or Fund 40. Are we paying more to this vision appraisal company based on the fact that we don't have someone heading up the department? Is it costing the taxpayer more money? Is there things that we would assist with a vision in these, under these circumstances? Is this the same dollar amount that we have allocated in the past? I know that we go out for revow, I think it's every six to seven years. So I was hoping maybe you can maybe give us some background and answer some of those questions.
Sure. Mr. Chairman, through you to Alderman Ginatasio, we do have a reevaluation coming up in a year. And every five years, state statute requires that a municipality revow its entire grant list. It used to be every 10 years, and that changed every five years. We have had our position for city assessor now posted on the HR website. If you know of any good candidates, we are looking for a good qualified assessor. That's one of those positions that are hard to come by. As you know, we've talked about that for other unique positions in the city. A Class 4 operator for wastewater is another one of those sought after positions. There are just not a lot of them in the state of Connecticut. And there are several others that are more difficult to fill than others. This is one of them. But each and every revow, we hire outside experts, especially for those complicated properties like malls and power plants and things that take a expertise or specialization. So each revow season, we hire experts. This revow season, we have the need to fill a gap of a commercial expertise, just because our former city assessor had an expertise or a background in commercial revow. The vast majority of towns and cities in Connecticut do not do their revow in-house. The vast majority of towns and cities hire out for the revow almost exclusively. So we have a hybrid model. We've always had a hybrid model where we farm out some of the revow, and we do some of the revow in-house. Right now, a little bit of the gap that we have is in the expertise that we lost with our former city assessor. We may not get that back. Again, most towns and cities in Connecticut farm out all of it. We have been able to do most of it in-house with some of the expertise that we have lined up. But we right now have a hybrid system. In terms of the second part of your question, this is not coming out of the the fund reserve, the rainy day fund is coming out of a special projects account. So this will not affect that fund reserve amount. This is coming out of a Fund 40, but as out of a special projects account. Peter Arad C is on the line. He can maybe fill in some of the details. Peter, do you have anything else to to add to this?
Thank you, Mayor. Through you to, through you, Mr. Chairman Alderman Ginatasio. I don't have much further to add. The mayor is correct. This is coming out of the Fund 40 unallocated contingency. It does not affect the general fund. And we, if you have any further questions, I'd be happy to answer them. And we also have our interim assessor, Marcus Eric, who's also on the line, if you have any further questions about the revaluation.
Okay. I do. Thank you, Peter. Mayor Blake, can you just maybe tell us how much extra it's costing us to, based on that commercial component, in order to bridge the gap? If, let's say, our assessor was on board and he had that commercial experience, which he did, what number would we be looking at? How much less would we be, would we be paying at this point? Did they, how much more are they charging us because we don't have that commercial component?
It is likely an overall savings overall, because we're not funding the position. We always go out to hire experts or people with specialization in commercial. I don't think that it's necessarily costing us more. It's just a different allocation of the resources that we have. What we can do as we get closer to the actual revow day of October 2021, and we have most of the grant list complete, we can do a comparison of 2016 or October 2016 versus October 2021, and compare and contrast the actual costs. But I think it's going to be relatively similar.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate the the time. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for all that information. Any more discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Madam Secretary, roll call vote, please.
Alderman Beatty?
Approve, yes.
Alderman Gaynor?
Yes.
Alderman Ginatasio?
Yes.
Alderman Golden?
Yes.
Alderman Harla?
Yes.
Alderman Marlowe?
Yes.
Alderman Parente?
Yes.
Alderman Frank Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Winthrop Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Sutton?
Yes.
Alderman Tranquilly?
Yes.
Alderman Vitro?
Yes.
Alderman Vitale?
Yes.
Alderman Willis?
Yes.
All in favor?
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Motion passed unanimously. Alderman Sutton, Agenda Item 8G.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the board approves the requested recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Board dated November 17, 2020, for the acceptance of the capital improvement plan for the years 2020 through 2025.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Alderman Ginatasio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to Mayor Blake. Mayor Blake, I know that we've spent a lot of money on curbs and sidewalks. And I see in the capital improvement plan before us that we continue to spend money on curbs and sidewalks, which are really beneficial for for all of us, and make the city more walkable and safer to walk. So I am in favor of that. But my question is, But my question is, it's, it's come to my attention that some people at certain times will be notified that they're responsible to maintain the sidewalk as far as repairing it when it's in disarray or it's cracked or it's deemed unsafe. So I'm just trying to understand, we're doing all these improvements with taxpayer dollars, but then we have, you know, isolated situations, I'll call them, where a taxpayer, a homeowner, or a business owner, could be a commercial business, will get notification that the sidewalk needs to be repaired in a timely manner. They need to respond within so many days to report back if, if they're going to repair it and, you know, be put on notice. And I don't understand why that, that's the case when we're allocating money. If the sidewalk is deemed unsafe, why wouldn't the city just repair it along with the other sidewalks that are being repaired?
Mr. Chairman, through you to Alderman Genitasio. Pursuant to City of Milford ordinance, adjacent property owners are responsible to maintain and keep in good condition their sidewalks, their curbs, and their gutters. That's a responsibility of the adjacent property owner. The city, whenever the city receives a complaint that there's a sidewalk lift, that there's a defect in a particular sidewalk or pedestrian pathway, it is incumbent upon us, I know that our risk manager would tell you that we have to then, once we are advised of the defect, we have to then advise the responsible party, in this case, the adjacent property owner, to correct that defect, or we are liable. You know, towns and cities have qualified sovereign immunity. We are immune. We get to, we get to enjoy that immunity for certain things. Things that are discretionary, we have immunity from. But once it becomes a ministerial task, we are then subject to, I see that Alderman Winsmith is, can tell you, we are subject to slip and falls and things of that nature. So we have to act and advise the adjacent property owner to correct the defect. If it's a defect that the city causes, for example, if a city tree lifts up a sidewalk, then the city will address that. The city also addresses brand-new sidewalks. So the city will install sidewalks that never previously existed. We're responsible for that. We do not require an adjacent property owner to be responsible for a sidewalk that never existed. But once it's installed, they are then responsible to maintain that sidewalk. There's some other complicated factors as well. For example, if there's a sewer project that the city engages in, where they rip up sidewalks, they will replace it as auxiliary to that sewer project or a road realignment project. The city will install or fix a sidewalk auxiliary to that. Also, if there is grant funding, the city will, will install sidewalks or replace sidewalks if it's a grant-funded project. But in all other cases, residents are responsible pursuant to the ordinance that has been on the books for many, many years to maintain their sidewalks, their curbs, and their gutters. I don't know if that clarified. If you have questions, I'm always happy to.
Yeah. Yeah, no, I appreciate the explanation. You know, this is happening, it's been brought to my attention that there's been some road repair, widening of the road. But one side of the street gets new sidewalks, but then the other side, for whatever reason, I don't know, doesn't. And then at the time when the job is being done, you know, I guess the city officials have taken notice, sent out a letter, you know, and asking that this property owner repair the sidewalk, replace it, you know, repair it. I mean, this is a sidewalk that could be 50 years old, you know. And it's been deemed unsafe, so they want him to pay for it. So I guess that leads me to the next thing. It's been brought to my attention that in a case like that, if the property owner doesn't have the, the money to actually make the improvement, then we offer them a, I don't know, we lean the property. Maybe you want to walk us through that a little bit? It's my understanding that we'll lean the property, and it's like a, and we'll actually do the repair for the cost of whatever the repair is, based on the, the city's cost with the contractor that is bonded with the city, and, you know, ask for that money at, you know, a later date down the road, I guess, when the property is eventually sold or exchanged hands. Is that, is that accurate?
For the most part, again, it is incumbent upon the city to correct a defect in the public right away, because ultimately, once we are put on notice of that defect of, you know, a sidewalk lift or, you know, some other faulty sidewalk, it is actually the, the city who will be responsible for a slip and fall or a trip and fall. So we are required to make sure that that sidewalk is corrected, that sidewalk is fixed. And per our ordinance, the adjacent property owner is the one that maintains it. So to your point, we do advise the adjacent property owner to remediate the defect, to fix the sidewalk, so it's compliant. And if they don't, after a period of time, the city's Public Works or their agent, their contractor, will come and fix the sidewalk. A lien will be placed on that property. And to be honest with you, it's the best deal you can get, because you don't actually, it's, it's a no-interest loan to some degree. You don't have to pay off that lien. It doesn't collect interest until the property is sold. So if you don't sell the property for 50 years, you don't have to pay off that lien for 50 years. So say it costs $1,000 to repair the sidewalk in 2020 money, and 2070, approximately 50 years later, you know, it will still only cost $2,000 to lift that lien. So it's a terrific deal for the adjacent property owner. A lot of property owners don't want a lien placed on their property, clouding title. But if they don't plan to move, if they don't plan to transfer the property anytime soon, it's something that they could take advantage of. I do see our city attorney on the line right now. So if you have more detailed questions that you have for this, John Burcham's happy to answer those.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I guess my last question would be, at whose discretion? Who determines whether the sidewalk is safe or once it's repaired, that it's, it's, it's okay?
The engineering department approves sidewalks to make sure that they're in compliance with city spec.
Okay. And if it's an existing sidewalk that needs to be repaired, they would actually have the, they would inspect it to see that the repairs were, were acceptable?
Yep. As, as you mentioned, in order to do work in the city right away, you have to have a bond with the city. So those contractors that are working within the city right away, doing sidewalks or driveway aprons, should have that bond with, filed with the engineering department.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor Blake. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for my indulgence. Thank you.
You're welcome. Is there any more discussion on the motion? Alderman Vitalli.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just would like to say that although I would be in agreement with much of what has been recommended in the, in the Capital Improvement Plan, I did not get my agenda until late this morning. And I didn't get home until late in the afternoon. And I really didn't look at it, and I couldn't get through it in, in good time and due time for the meeting. So I would have to abstain on this vote. So I just would like to tell you that. Thank you.
Any more discussion on the motion? Alderman Winsmith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And through you, we discussed the Capital Improvement Plan last January and February. And I did not come out in favor of the plan. And I believe that I was one of two people to not vote for this plan. And that was for a number of reasons. The, the plan now, as the plan had back in January and Fed, in February, has a lot of good in it. The city needs a new fire pumper. The city needs maintenance to its roads, to its infrastructure. The senior center needs a new roof. There's a lot of good in this plan that I support. But there's also a lot of items in this plan that I do not support. And I believe the last time I addressed the Capital Improvement Plan, I discussed the police headquarters. And the fact that there was a certain amount allotted there, that was not enough. And I believe the amount here is 20 million, and it's not enough. And if I recall correctly, the last time that there was significant discussion by this board with respect to a new police station, the number was 50 or 60 million or something of that nature. And, and so if, if we're going to put a potential, or potentially put on here, a new police station, new police headquarters, we should put a realistic number on it, if you do in fact intend to build a new police headquarters. And so when I see things on here like a recreation or community center, which on the last Capital Improvement Plan was called a welcome center. So we've just renamed it, but included the same allocation for it. When I see $10 million for a welcome center or a recreation center, whatever you like to call it, that is something that should be allocated towards a new police station. If we're going to spend 10 million on that, well, let's put that towards a new police station, allocate 30 million towards a new police station, and then discuss how you can actually build a new police headquarters. I mean, I think that would be a much more feasible prospect for a new police headquarters. So, I mean, along with that, that has not been addressed at all since I addressed this concern on the last Capital Improvement Plan. So I guess it's falling on deaf ears. And, and I think the last item as well is the fact that we discussed at length a new long-range plan for education. And I have not seen any discussion or commitment or anything of that nature for a new long-range plan. And, and so the fact that that has not been addressed, and the fact that the new police station has not been addressed. And I understand that this is a quote-unquote wish list. But things on this wish list get done. They get built. The work gets bonded for, or contracted for. So if we're going to put something down here on a wish list, we should put something down here that we can actually do. Don't put $20 million down for a police station if you can't actually do it. Let's actually put the right amount down on there, address that problem, address a long-range plan for education, so that actually we can all come to a consensus on a capital improvement plan. That's what I asked for last time. That's what I'm asking for this time. And that's why I'm not going to be able to support this or vote for it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Chairman, I appreciate Alderman Smith's comments. And again, this is a planning tool. The vast majority of the items will not ultimately happen. We have them on there. A lot of these items, in case there's a federal or a state grant or a private grant that happens to come up, which would require that the item be on the Capital Improvement Plan. We have things that we would likely not fund with any type of local money on there just in case money starts falling out of the sky and we need to have this available, available to be eligible for a particular grant. We are very conservative with what we spend our local money on, with how we bond and how we maintain that money. With respect to the police station that was brought up a couple of times, and Alderman Smith would be more comfortable with 30 million than $20 million allocated, please note that it is actually $30 million listed as the, the budget amount in the Capital Improvement Plan for the police station. But again, that's something that we are working on to make sure that we enhance the facilities. The proposal that went forward a couple of years ago was way out of whack with the amount that we had budgeted for and we had talked about over the course of many years. We're still working with the police department to make sure that we have the right type of facility, whether that's an enhanced existing facility or a brand-new facility into the future. But for all of these items, whether it's a, you know, a $10 million recreational enhancement or enhancements to our emergency management public infrastructure, for each one of these, it's something that the Board of Alderman is going to revisit. Nothing is funded under this planning document. It is just, as Alderman Smith said, a wish list. Things to help us plan for the future or make us eligible for grant opportunities if they happen to land on our doorstep. With respect to the educational planning that was brought up, this is the tool that the Board of Education uses for its capital infrastructure planning. Each year, the Board of Education, or the Milford Public Schools and the Board of Education revise and adjust and tweak this capital plan. This is just for the, the infrastructure of the school system, the 14 schools. They did do a comprehensive look at where Milford schools will be just, just about five years ago. And they continue to update the capital infrastructure plan every year. I'm happy to kind of help coordinate a meeting with Jimmer Chitelli from the, the school district, or Anna Katia from the school district to get more clarity about this, especially before we fund any projects. Generally, this board sees the bond authorizations at the February Board of Alderman meeting. I can assure you that if and when we fund school projects, we will have representatives from the Board of Education, from Milford Public Schools there to ask or to answer any questions that you may have about future growth of the district or future planning of the district. So there will be that future opportunity come February. Traditionally, that's been when we fund school projects. I do not anticipate that the Pumpkin Delight project will be on the agenda for February, even though it's scheduled in our Capital Improvement Plan to start construction this year. I know that Alderman Hardiman and Alderman Vitalli are on that school construction committee, and I just do not think that they're far enough along with the design of Pumpkin Delight. I know that they're still interviewing architects and engineers and, and design firms for us to be able to bond the construction component in February or authorize the, the right amount of money for the construction in February. But I do foresee that at some point soon, that project will be revisited by this board as well. So again, I'm happy to answer questions about the Capital Improvement Plan, but this is just the annual update that we do for our five-year plan. Each year, we make tweaks and adjustments driven by different departments in the city.
Thank you. And, and Mr. Chairman, again, through you, I just want to reiterate, for, for the police station, it is 30 million, and, and that's good. It's not what I'm, it's not, that's not the figure, the final figure that I'm comfortable with. What I'm comfortable with is allocating the funds, $10 million for a welcome center to go to the police station. So if it makes it 40 million, but more than that is needed to build a new police facility, I think we should have a real, now we're 40 million. Now, now we're a little bit of the ways there. So I think there needs to be a real discussion as to, can this actually get done? And how much is the actual feasible cost of that?
Any more discussion on the motion? Alderman Marlowe.
Through you, Mr. Chair, to the mayor. Mayor, appreciate, I, I think you answered a, a big portion of what I wanted to ask about the schools and how it was really determined what school gets what. I, I know some of them need roofs and whatever. But I didn't know how that tied into. I, I know some of them need roofs and whatever, but I didn't know how that tied into the long-range planning as to what schools needed additions as, you know, based on future enrollment, or how they really came up with that. But I, I, I think that you answered my questions with that. One other question I did have in, with the schools, I see one of the items there is for security for the schools, and I know some of that is involved with building new vestibules outside the school. What schools right now do you know have that done already? Are, are we halfway there, or are we all the way there? You're muted, Mayor.
Alderman Marlowe, I, I will get you the exact information, but this is a multi-phase, or multi-year rollout of school security enhancements. There was a commitment after the Sandy Hook tragedy, that we hardened our school facilities to make them more impregnable to bad stuff. So for those vestibules, we have focused on, you know, this past summer, I think we did four schools, including Orchard Hills, the academy. I know that we just, when we finished the West Shore enhancements, the big project at West Shore, a new hardened vestibule was part of that. I can get you the exact list for each of the 14 schools, and where they are with the renovations, though, the security enhancements. But the, the plan is to, over a, a couple-year period, make all 14 schools more, more secure.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And just through you, Mr. Chairman, to the mayor. Again, just for information more than anything else, I see that on there, there's also in the schools, there's some abatement projects that are scheduled. Are we going to be at a point, after that's done, that we have no more materials that need to be abated, or is that still going to be an ongoing thing?
Mr. Chairman, through you to Alderman Marlowe. These schools, you know, were built 50, 60 years ago, when the type of materials that they used back 50, 60 years ago were not known at that point to be carcinogenic, or in any way, shape, or form, bad for kids' health. With science, with research, materials seem to, or materials that were used in construction within schools have found to be bad for kids, and so they were remediated. My guess is that, you know, as the, the years pass, as science becomes even more sound, that we'll find that even some of the renovations that we're making today, some of the materials that we're using today are gonna be, are gonna need to be remediated, just because, we don't know what those materials are as we sit here today, but the more, the, you know, the more that we have that experience, the more we find they're not good for our health. So I think that there's always gonna be an ongoing need to remediate, but that's just me, that's just me.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, one last question to you, Mr. Mayor, is, I saw on one of the items, again, is that one of the treatment plants, we're gonna, we would like to put in a methane collection system to generate, to help generate electricity. Is that going to be something where we see that that will, will get the payback for that over a certain number of years?
We will need to run the numbers. If we can find a, one of the things that we just did at the Beaver Brook plant is a, a fuel cell, but in terms of utilizing the, the spent methane for a productive purpose, if we can find the value in that, and again, we have energy experts that will be running the numbers for us, that will be a project that we will move forward with, but again, it has to make financial sense.
Of course. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Alderman, Chairman.
You're welcome. Any more discussion on the motion? Alderman Tranquilly.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you to Attorney Berchem. Attorney Berchem, I guess I'm looking for a little more clarification on the sidewalks. Alderman Ginatasio asked a question before about the sidewalks, and what I'm looking for is, I'm a little concerned about the residential homeowner. If a sidewalk needs repair, and the city does not, or doesn't, if, if it needs repair, and somebody slips and falls, and they sue the city, can the city go after the homeowner after the fact for the money?
Mr. Chair, through you to Alderman Tranquilly. The law in the state of Connecticut is that sidewalks, the repair, municipalities are permitted by ordinance to shift the responsibility for the maintenance of the sidewalks, for sidewalks, for sidewalk repairs, but not the legal liability, with the exception of snow and ice. So any sidewalk, regardless of whether it's a tree lift, or it's just come under some state of disrepair, if somebody trips and falls over a sidewalk, or slips and falls, the city is responsible, and has, in a, in a legal sense, it is liable for its repair, and cannot go after the adjacent property owner to indemnify them, or to reimburse the city. Now, the mayor alluded to the immunity, what, the immunity we don't have, but we do have, the only way you can sue the city is under 13A 149, that's the Highway Defect Statute, and that requires somebody who falls on a sidewalk to prove that the defect that caused them to fall was the sole proximate cause. If they were 1%, if they were 1% responsible, then they would not recover. That is not the same case with snow and ice. The 7-163 allowed municipalities to transfer the legal liability to adjacent property owners for clearing of snow and ice by ordinance. The city of Milford availed itself of that right probably 20, 30 years ago. So adjacent property owners are responsible not only to clear the ice, but they're legally responsible, such that if somebody slips and falls on snow or ice, and they sue the municipality, the city can go after the adjacent property owner for reimbursement and/or indemnification, if it's in fact a private sidewalk, or not a city sidewalk, or, you know, in front of a city building, I should say.
Okay. And I guess my other, my other concern is, I'm still trying to figure out why a homeowner, if they purchase a house, and the sidewalks are 50 years old, why the homeowner would be responsible for the sidewalks?
Sidewalks are more likely on their property, but within the city's right-of-way.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Is there any more discussion on the motion? Alderman Ginatasio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you to Mayor Blake. Mayor Blake, I just wanted to discuss the police station. As you know, I was on the building committee. We purchased the property to build it. I don't remember the exact dollar amount. It was probably 4 million, above 4 million dollars, I think we spent, taxpayer money. We spent an additional, it was well over a million dollars for design, architectural drawings, renderings, in order to go out and get pricing, an estimated cost of what it would cost to build a new police station if we were to build it today. So with that being said, Alderman Smith does raise a good point, and I think that I've also expressed this in the past. At what point, and I'm not saying that we need to build the police station tomorrow, but at what point will this, this number be revisited and amended to reflect today's current costs? Not that we're gonna do the job, we understand it's a wishlist, but at whose discretion is that? Can this board take action to, to add to that number, to increase the number, so it's more in today's line of, of expense? Or is that up to the department head, which would be the police chief, to come to you and request that this line item, or this project on the capital improvement plan be increased by, let's say, 10 million dollars? Because the way that I see it, the way the Board of Ed works, is they come to you and tell you what their expenses are, and what their budget is, and what they see, what they need, and they put a number on it. So can you just help me to understand, at what point will this, or how will this, or how can we adjust this number?
Mr. Chairman, through you to Alderman Ginatasio. This is a place, place marker for approximately the amount that the city can afford. If this board decided to build a 80 million dollar police station, we could move forward with that. However, I just don't think that the city of Milford can afford that at this point. We can't afford an 80 dollar, 80 million dollar police station. It would increase all property owners' taxes significantly. It would raise by, you know, approximately half a mil to a mil, the amount of taxes for every single property. It's a big number that we would be paying back for the next 20 years, assuming that we bonded it over a 20-year period. For all of these projects, if a particular project cost more than the amount that was in the capital improvement plan, and the board decided to fund it, we, we could fund that. This does not limit the board to 30 million dollars on the nose. If you wanted to bond 80 million dollars for the police station, we could do that. However, the tail wags the dog, I guess, sometimes, and this number is there so that a building committee does not propose an 80 million dollar police station. They, they work within a budget that's been discussed, that's been agreed to, and they try to stay within the, the budget, and they don't exceed it by, you know, two and a half, almost three times the amount that has been discussed.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, just to follow up. No, Mayor Blake, I understand, I'm not looking to build a 80 million dollar police station by no means, but I think the prudent thing to do is maybe increase it by 5 million at some point, you know, so the number becomes more realistic. It, it's really hard to build a municipal building with all of the specifications, especially a police station, for 30 million dollars. The estimates that we looked at were, you know, not as high as what you stated, but probably, you know, upwards over 40. But for, for my, for my information, I just want to know, when can we, or how can we, or who's it up to to determine whether we can increase the number? And I'm not saying increase it by a lot, even if it's 5 million. I mean, do we have the ability right now to amend this capital improvement plan that's before us, and put a motion out to increase the police station by 5 million dollars to get it from 30 million to 35 million? I mean, are we within our legislative rights to do that?
The city attorney can correct me, but I would say, yes, you are. Again, this is just a planning tool, but if you would like to create an amendment to this particular motion, so that it would, you would approve this document subject to this amendment, that is something that this board can entertain.
And I am very, and I understand your point of having the number at a specific level where you don't have a committee that's gonna come in and, you know, overspend. I, I, I do understand that, but I just feel like the 30 million dollars has been on this plan for, for several years, and sitting on that committee, realistically, you know, it would cost well over 40, but I, I'm just trying to understand the process here. You know, if we feel that something is being underfunded, and I understand it's just a number, a holding number, but at what point will the number increase? And I do believe that it was less at one time, and it was my understanding that it came from, I don't know, maybe a discussion with the police chief at some point, and the number was, you know, increased to 30 at some point. Do you recall that, Mayor Blake?
So when I first came into office, the number, I believe, was around 20 million dollars. So it has, over my term in office, increased to 30 million dollars as, again, a placeholder within the capital improvement plan.
But I never took a vote on that. To get it from 20 to 30, I don't remember voting on that increase, unless it was just put before us like it is tonight, and it was just increased internally with discussions that you had with the police chief, and, and we just, you know, voted on it, and it was accepted. Is, is that what happened? Because I've been on this board for several years, and I, I just, I'm assuming that it was just done maybe administratively?
So the proposal, the proposal comes before you every year. I'm in agreement with what you said, that over the last couple of years, 30 million dollars has been the placeholder. Prior to that, and I don't know the exact year that it increased, I do know that, you know, since I was on the Board of Alderman, then became mayor, it's, it has increased significantly, but that this same item has been on the capital improvement plan for many, many, many years, decades, with adjustments. And we have made some, you know, significant infrastructure enhancements to the police station, but it is one of those buildings that was built approximately 40 years ago, and it's, at the time, it was designed with some, some faults, some things that don't necessarily work in favor of 2020 policing. They may not have even worked in favor of policing in the 1980s, but I'm in agreement that, you know, adjustments should be made. Some have been made. Some of the things that we've done to kind of get us through, like, we've created the auxiliary station over at Simon Lake to give additional room for the, the department. Those have gotten us, you know, through the last couple of years, and perhaps the next couple of years until we have an enhanced facility.
Well, I, I just feel that, you know, being that we did purchase the property, that we did spend money on design, I'd hate to see it go to waste, so, and I'm not looking to do this, you know, I'm looking to do it conservatively, but I would like to propose a motion to amend the, the police station project from 30 million to 35 million, and at least show some sort of, you know, I don't know, step forward, you know, with, with hopefully maybe a few more years down the road, we can look at it again. But, you know, I just think that, that would at least, you know, at least become a little more realistic, maybe bring it a little closer. And I would like to propose that in the form of a motion. So I don't know, maybe I don't have a second, but if anyone wants to second my motion.
Second.
I'll, I'll second.
Isn't there a motion on the floor? And that's how this discussion came up?
This is an amendment to the motion. There is presently a motion that hasn't been voted on, and Alderman Ginatasio is amending the motion. Alderman Ginatasio, you made a motion, is there a second on that motion?
I believe so. Win Smith?
Yes, second.
All right, so we have a motion on the floor, and a second for amendment. Any discussion on the amendment? Alderman Wynn Smith.
I apologize, Mr. Chairman. I can table my further questions till after this vote.
Okay, Alderman Sutton.
Yes, through you, Mr. Chairman, to Mayor Blake. What would the practical effect be of raising the capital improvement plan by that $5 million with regard to the improvements to the police department?
It's something that, in my estimation, the city attorney may disagree, but I think it's fine. I don't think it will have any impact. Again, this is just a planning tool. By approving this amendment, you're letting the administration know that you would like to revisit this particular project with a threshold above the $30 million at $35 million. That's perfectly appropriate. I don't think that there is any practical impact other than that. So we'll note it. We'll make sure that that's where the discussion starts as we review this particular infrastructure enhancement.
And thank you, Mr. Mayor. And again, through you, Mr. Chairman, that does not bind us to that figure ultimately. When that comes down the pike, it could be higher, it could be lower as far as the amount that the city pays for the improvements to the police department, correct?
Every single project that is moved forward with the city, it goes before your board for funding. So this does not fund any projects. This is just the capital improvement plan, which is a planning tool. So this wouldn't have an impact that the board would not see at a later point.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any more discussion on the amendment? Alderman Frante.
I'll table mine until after the amendment.
Any more discussion on the amendment? Alderman Marlowe.
No, I didn't have a question. Nope.
Any more discussion on the amendment? Alderman Frank Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, through you, to Alderman Genitazio. Tony, just so I understand, I mean, we've established the five-year capital improvement is really kind of a wish list that usually evolves in the years before the five-year term comes up. Can you just, maybe I missed it. What the significance of increasing the proposed expenses associated with renovating or rebuilding the police station by $5 million? I mean, what is the significance of that figure? Why not make it $50 million? I'm just trying to understand so I can understand the motivation. I can get a good idea of what, I mean, the mayor's established that it doesn't have any legal bearing at this point. But I am curious and interested in what your rationale is.
Right, so to answer your question, Alderman Smith, through you, Mr. Chairman. It's a starting point. I feel like we've, that we invested in the- I'm sorry. Alderman Smith, are you there?
Yep, yeah, I'm here.
I feel that it's a starting point. I don't want to be heavy-handed and ask for, you know, a lot of money. But I think that at some point, we need to have the discussion and make some slow progress towards, you know, maybe a more realistic number. I think 35 is less. But again, I'm trying to take baby steps. You know, this capital improvement comes before us, you know, sooner than you think. Time goes by, months goes by, years go by. And we did invest in the property, we did invest in drawings. And I just would like to keep it alive, so to speak. So maybe in the future, not, you know, not tomorrow, but maybe in the near future, at some point, you know, it would be revisited again and maybe another 5 million could be added. And maybe at some point, we can, you know, when things are better economically and it makes sense to invest in the police station without actually building it, without having to raise taxes. I think that's the main concern here. So I don't want to be, you know, heavy-handed. But, you know, I think 30, I think to add $5 million to it is really nominal. And it's not really going to happen anyways. And if it was to happen, it would come back before us, you know, for a final vote with a complete, you know, presentation. But, you know-
Any more discussion on the amendment?
Those are my thoughts.
Thank you.
Alderman Vitale.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I'm hearing two different things. I'm hearing renovations and I'm hearing conceptual pieces that Alderman Genitazio is talking about building a new establishment or a new police department. I think the mayor is saying we're adding and we're making renovations and that doesn't seem to me to be that question of the plan. And yet, we've gone through this trying to build a new police department. So I see we're building a new police department that we have to increase that number because of today's prices as to the future of what the prices will be in 10 years or five years down the road. Five years down the road, maybe $30 million is nothing, really. But are we eating, but I guess the question is, are we eating away at this plan to renovate? Since it's only a wish list anyway, where are we getting the money to renovate? I guess that's confusing. I hear renovation and I hear new. And I'm totally confused about where this money is being spent. It's not being spent, it's only a concept. So there's so many things here. So, Mr. Mayor, maybe you can straighten that out, please?
I'm sorry, straighten what out? Whether the direction is to build new or to renovate existing?
Well, as Tony is talking, I think Tony's concept is a new building. You're talking renovating and as we're putting new things, are we doing renovations to that building now? Would be a question.
We have renovated the building over the last many years. I think that we've enhanced it. For example, we are adding locker rooms or have recently added locker rooms. Within the last year, we've made some improvements to the roof for safety reasons so that ice can fall off the roof or collect on the roof and injure anyone. So we have renovated the property and we will continue to renovate the property. But in terms of a significant renovation or a new building, that's something that a building committee would assess and address, again, in the context of a overall budget. The overall budget that the building committee landed on the last time was in excess of what I was comfortable with. They were given the charge to either renovate and at one point, they looked to go in a different direction and build a new facility. And they were trending in that direction, but the overall cost was too much. So I think that both are on the table to make sure that the needs of the Milford Police Department in 2020 are met or the needs of the Milford Police Department for the next 50, 100 years are met. Whether or not that's building new or renovating the existing, a significant renovation, those are something that we are going to revisit. But one of the factors that we have to review whether or not to renovate or build a new is the resources that we have, the cost of the overall project. That is always a factor, you know. In economics, you have limited resources. And if it was something that was paid for exclusively by a grant, we would probably build a grand cathedral and it would be new. And it would be well in excess of the amount that is in our capital improvement plan. But we also have to take into consideration the taxpayers who are going to ultimately fund this project. We have not found a funding source through a federal or state grant for a police station. If that happens, we will be ready to pounce on it. But at this point, it will be all local money. It will be money that local taxpayers pay exclusively for. And because it is such a big number, we are in a holding pattern right now, looking to retool and find a way to make sure that the needs of our police department are met at the same time, taking into consideration the financial costs.
Just as a follow-up, Mr. Chair, the fact is that if we keep renovating, renovating and renovating each year, each year, each year, so there's going to be, building a new building is going to be a moot point because we've renovated so much and trying to meet the needs of the police department at this particular point in time. And as time goes on, then it's a moot point of building a police department. So, you know, in the renovation spending and keep spending and keep spending that money and to get it where we think it should be, would it be not more beneficial to say, hey, that we need to strike up that or begin to put back into process the building committee? And again, Alderman Genitazio has brought up the fact that, don't we own that property on the post road that we bought from Beard? And isn't that the spot that was supposed to be put? So at what point do we say renovation, renovation is enough? We can't meet the needs for the next 10, 15 years? And we start to be more mindful of building a new building? I guess that was rhetorical.
Is there any more discussion on the amendment? Madam Chairman, Madam Secretary, I'm sorry, roll call vote on the amendment.
Alderman Beatty. Alderman B.
You're muted.
Alderman Beatty, you're muted.
I tried, sorry. Disapprove of the amendment. No, vote no.
Alderman Gaynor?
Yes.
Alderman Genitazio?
Yes.
Alderman Golden?
No.
Alderman Harla?
No.
Alderman Marlowe?
I'm in favor of the amendment.
Alderman Parente?
Yes.
Alderman Frank Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Winthrop Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Sutton?
Yes.
Alderman Tranquilly?
Yes.
Alderman Vitro?
No.
Alderman Willis?
Yes.
I think you skipped me.
You abstained.
I abstained from the main motion, not having to, had enough time to read the entire plan, but I do have an opinion here. I vote yes for this amendment.
Okay.
The other vote didn't come up yet.
Okay, I'm sorry, I thought if you abstained, you abstained from the amendments as well. My error-
That wasn't a vote, that wasn't at that point in time, yes.
Okay. 10 in favor, 14 against.
I'm sorry, Madam Secretary, repeat that, please?
10 in favor, 4 against.
So the amendment passes 10 to 4. On the original motion, any more discussion on the original motion? Alderman Beatty.
I think it's important when we vote on a motion to reread the motion, especially when there's been considerable discussion. So if you're voting on amendment, just have Alderman Sutton reread what we're voting on and then go through the amendment. I've made this suggestion before, so I'm making a point of putting it into the record because it is confusing. Thank you.
Okay, Alderman Sutton, could you reread the-
Well, you don't have to-
It was already voted.
It's a fait accompli, but going forward, thank you.
I'd be happy to. It would be the approval of the capital improvement plan for the years 2020 through 2025 instead of the amount for the improvements or building of a new police department from $30 million to $35 million.
Thank you, Alderman Sutton. Any more discussion on the original motion? Madam Secretary, roll call vote, please.
Alderman Beatty?
Approved, yes.
Alderman Gaynor?
Yes.
Alderman Genitazio?
Yes.
Alderman Golden?
Yes.
Alderman Harla?
Yes.
Alderman Marlowe?
Yes.
Alderman Parente?
Yes.
Alderman Frank Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Winthrop Smith?
No.
Alderman Sutton?
Yes.
Alderman Tranquilly?
Yes.
Alderman Vitro?
Yes.
Alderman Vitale, you're abstained, correct?
I'm abstaining, yes.
Alderman Willis?
Yes.
So we have 12 in favor, one no, one abstention.
We have 12 in favor, one no, and one extension. Moving on to agenda item number nine. There is no new business. Agenda item number 10, there are no budget memo transfers. Agenda item number 11, moving on to refunds. Alderman Sutton, agenda item number 11A.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the board approve refunds in the amount of $25,204.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Alderman Frante.
Yes, I actually had my hand raised previously. So just to take a moment. And through you, Mr. Chairman, I think this goes to John Virchum. But it seems like earlier in our conversation, there is a lack of clarity in terms of the mechanism and at the stage that the board has authority to make motions or to make changes to something like the capital improvements plan. So not necessarily tonight, but since we have a new member, I'm a relatively new member, maybe we could have set a time to have some review of that. I think it would be helpful to the whole board. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, through you, to Alderman Frante. I will certainly provide some more detailed guidance on that. I agree with the mayor that I don't believe there's any prohibition in terms of changing the, amending the capital improvement plan. The capital improvement plan is a guide document that needs to be approved by the city in reviewing whether the capital improvements the city takes is consistent with the plan of conservation and develop the P O C D, which is statutorily required to be created. The only issue, I just want to make sure, is that in terms of the projects we do take up, as you'll note from the agenda, the capital improvement for you was reviewed and favorably recommended by the Planning and Zoning Board as is statutorily required under Connecticut General Statute 8-24. So that, the positive referral from P and Z came with the original number prior to the amendment. But since this board voted in a supermajority, I don't think that's at all an issue. But I'm happy to give you more detail at a later date.
Any more discussion on the motion? Thank you, John, for that clarity. Any more discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Alderman, Madam Secretary, roll call vote, please.
Alderman Beatty?
Yes, approved.
Alderman Gaynor?
Yes.
Alderman Genitazio?
Yes.
Alderman Golden?
Yes.
Alderman Harla?
Yes.
Alderman Marlowe?
Yes.
Alderman Parente? Alderman Frank Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Winthrop Smith?
I apologize, point of clarification, this is on A G.
I'm sorry?
I'm wondering what this vote is on?
It's on 11A.
Oh, I apologize, yes.
Alderman Sutton?
Yes.
Alderman Tranquilly?
Yes.
Alderman Vitro?
Yes.
Alderman Vitale?
Yes.
Alderman Willis?
Yes.
All in favor? All in favor.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Madam Secretary. Next item agenda is agenda item number 12, are there any reports of standing committees? Alderman Frank Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The ordinance committee met earlier this evening to consider an ordinance amending an ordinance establishing compensation of city officials and employees in the service of the city of Milford, in this case, the respective party registrars. This is an ordinance, as the mayor had pointed out, that is guided by customary, but I believe also statutory requirement in advance of the new term beginning January. This readjustment of the pay scale of the pay for registrars usually follows, although they are not part of the bargaining unit, will follow the prevailing increases among among represented employees in the city, in this case roughly 2% per year. The ordinance enacted by the Board of Aldermen of the City of Milford, an ordinance establishing compensation of city officials and employees in the service of the city of Milford is hereby amended as follows. Article 3, Schedule U4 of an ordinance establishing the compensation of city officials and employees in the service of the city of Milford is hereby amended as follows. Schedule U4, the following elected positions regulated by statute as to duties shall be compensated by annual fiscal year payments payable in 12-month installments as follows. From January 1, 2021, December 31, 2021, the position of registrar of voters, the annual salary will be adjusted to $37,071.24. For the period beginning January 1, 2022, ending December 31, 2022, also for the position of registrar of voters, the annual salary suggested to $37,812.66. This ordinance shall become effective in accordance with the provisions of the Charter of the City of Milford, and I'd like to present that to the full board, Mr. Chairman, as a motion.
Thank you, Alderman Frank Smith. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded, is there any discussion? Alderman Frank Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a kind of a housekeeping thing that we do from time to time, as we do with many of the city officials during different points of negotiation with the bargaining units. I was reflecting on this, though, over the weekend, because it's really occurred to me at the end of this election cycle, which was probably one of the most the most harrowing and probably the most potentially most complicated election that we've seen in this country nationally, not so much locally or in the state of Connecticut, but it certainly had an effect across all of the electorate, across the city, about the the political customs and the expectations we have as members of a democracy. And I came to think, we have so many heroes among us in these perilous times, the people that are walking into these COVID units with masks on every day, well above their human ability to deal with some of these things, but going there, wading into it nonetheless. I was impressed by the fact that, you know, in this, in our republic, the political people, the elected officials do come and go and they make their mark, but the real sinew of our democracy, of our republic, is really the people that guard the public trust. And I've said this many times before, but I've been impressed by it even more. The stability and the greatness of this country is often represented and exemplified, most often by the civilian people that hold our system together regardless of their political affiliations. And the registrar of voters, and the, our town clerk, our city clerk's office, registrar's office, a lot of the volunteers that come out and work the polls. This was going to be a very difficult election, and it could have gone very much differently this year. And the registrar's office, in our case, Carrie Roland, Deborah Fellenbaum, and their staff did a Herculean job in anticipation of it, with all the changes coming down from the state, with all of the distractions, held it together and did an exemplary job. The amount of money they make on it, I'm sure, is not as relevant a point here, but I think it's a cause to recognize what these people do, because they are the bulwark of our democracy. You know, politicians have to take different positions in good faith and bad. We are the ones that make the votes, make the executive decisions, but the system itself is held together throughout this country by people like Karen Fortunati, like Carrie Roland, like Deborah Fellenbaum, and the people that work in their offices, and I can't tell you how much I appreciate it and wanted to use this opportunity just to recognize what the registrar's office does and continues to do for us.
Thank you, Alderman Smith. Any more discussion on the motion? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Alderman Beatty?
Yes, is it possible to read the motion with the into before I vote, as requested? Thank you. Am I out of line with that request? Might clarify a lot of things. I have it in front of me, but the figures.
I'd be happy to read them back.
Would you like to repeat the?
Yeah, Ellen, you're looking for the schedule itself, what we're voting on in terms of the dollar amounts. Schedule U4, the following elected positions regulated by statute as to duties shall be compensated by annual fiscal year payments payable in 12 monthly installments as follows. January 1, 2021, to December 31, 2021, registrar of voters' annual salary, it'll be $37,071.24. For this similar period, January 1, 2022, to December 31, 2022, annual salary $37,812.66. This ordinance shall become effective in accordance with the provisions of the Charter of the City of Milford.
Thank you. Now, I didn't want to hold up the vote.
Madam Secretary? Can you continue the roll call vote, please?
Alderman Beatty?
Approve, yes.
Alderman Gaynor?
Yes.
Alderman Genotasio?
Yes.
Alderman Golden?
Yes.
Alderman Harla?
Yes.
Alderman Marlowe?
Yes.
Alderman Parente?
Yes.
Alderman Frank Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Winthrop Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Sutton?
Yes.
Alderman Tranquilly?
Yes.
Alderman Vitro?
Yes.
Alderman Vitale?
Yes.
Alderman Willis?
Yes.
All in favor.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Madam Secretary. Is there any more reports of any standing committees? Hearing none, we'll move on to agenda item number 13, are there any reports of any special committees? Hearing none, is there a motion to adjourn? So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
The motion has been made to adjourn and seconded. Madam Secretary, roll call vote, please.
Alderman Beatty?
Yes.
Alderman Gaynor?
Yes.
Alderman Genotasio?
Yes.
Alderman Golden?
Yes.
Alderman Harla?
Yes.
Alderman Marlowe?
Yes.
Alderman Parente?
Yes, and Frank, it's been a pleasure serving with you.
Alderman Frank Smith?
Yes. Thank you, Michelle.
Alderman Winthrop Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Sutton?
Yes.
Alderman Tranquilly?
Yes.
Alderman Vitro?
Yes.
Alderman Vitale?
Happy holidays to everyone, yes.
Alderman Willis?
Yes.
All in favor.
Motion passes unanimously. Good night, everyone. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Happy holidays, see you next year.